Thank you all, now that you've been seated, would you please stand so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated.
Move these big chairs.
May I have the clerk read the roll, please?
Mayor Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
Any additions, deletions, and modifications?
Yes ma'am, you have the printout in front of you.
Would you like me to read them in, or did you?
Yes ma'am, please.
Okay.
Please read them in.
Alright. Proposed additions, deletions, and modifications. And under additions, we have new item C, under announcements and presentations, an update on the Junior Ryder Cup Challenge Trip to Scotland. Then, new item I, under consent, Resolution 51-2018, authorizing the mayor to be the voting delegate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens at the upcoming Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. A copy of the resolution and staff report has been provided to each member of council. There are no deletions and no modifications. May I get a motion and a second, please? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay. Announcements and presentations. Would it be okay if I move item C up to item A and bring Cherie Pla up to the podium? And with that, whoever else you want to invite. Cherie is going to give us an update on the Junior Ryder Cup Challenge Trip to Scotland, where these young children made the United States proud.
Good morning, council, good morning, staff. Good, I'm sorry, good evening.
It might still be morning on your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to give an update on how wonderful the city is, how wonderful all the businesses and patrons in the city are, and how wonderful it is to be a part of Palm Beach Gardens. Standing before you are, we took a team of 15 junior golfers from Sand Hill Crane Golf Course to Scotland to compete in a Junior Ryder Cup Challenge. So, do I have to, how do I get this to keep? I'll keep talking, sorry about that. We might have a little trouble with the video, but, uh, here we go. I'd like to start with the experience. So, to draw the backdrop of what we accomplished this year, 15 juniors and parents from Sand Hill Crane, due to the notoriety that we received a year's pass on the CBS station for our wonderful junior program, we got invited to do our Junior Ryder Cup and play against a junior team in Scotland and play in a Ryder Cup-style format to bring home a trophy for the USA. When this opportunity presented itself, we had a team meeting with parents to see if this was something we wanted to do, a goal that we wanted to set for our team and our kids. And, um, everybody said yes, this sounds like an amazing opportunity. The city, the city council, Mayor Marino, so many sponsors, the Honda Classic, the Gardens Mall, the past city council, everybody just jumped on board to help us go on this amazing journey. So, we set the goal to go. The kids, the city, the community, we raised over $65,000 to fund the trip. The kids worked extremely hard. We trained literally eight months before this trip took place to get ready and to get prepared to go on the trip. And through the hard work of everyone, through the fundraising, the kids were raising money on weekends, we ran tournaments, just a real group effort to get everything done, we were able to take this amazing experience. If you look at some of the photos that are going over the TV at the moment, the kids got to really experience Scotland. They got to experience the culture. They visited St. Andrews. They visited Carnoustie in the Open Championship. They took pictures on the famous bridge. They got to interact with junior golfers from Scotland and talk about everyday things like, what's your favorite food, and what's school like? And, uh, what's it like in America? And it was just such an amazing experience to give them a piece of the culture, the history. We visited castles in Edinburgh. We, um, visited cathedrals. It was just such an amazing experience for all of the parents, all of the kids, and something we'll all treasure for our lives. So, that was just, um, just an amazing, amazing goal, to be able to experience Scotland. The second part of the trip was really all about the Ryder Cup. So, by the time we reached our Ryder Cup competition, our team represented themselves so well. They played as a team, they worked together. If Candace could help me out, we have a video we'd like to show of the actual Ryder Cup experience. The kids just was amazing. And the competition on Ryder Cup Day was very close. It came down to one hole. It's not it, it's alright. It's okay. Can we get to the video another route, or no?
So much for technology.
Apologize.
So, for the kids that were in Edinburgh, did you guys go up on the big swing? Anybody do the big swing? Isn't that crazy?
Hey, and also while I'm sitting here and you guys are doing the technical stuff, on my way over actually had several texts from PGA Corridor, Tom Karns, David Luke's at Bank of Community Bank, and John Channing congratulating you guys and to a job well done. So, I was on my way over, so I thought I'd share that.
Thank you, yes. So, this was the Ryder Cup Day. Uh, a round of applause for the kids, guys.
Hey guys, Kayla back here with another video.
Um, all I can say about the trip was that it exceeded expectations and the lessons we taught our kids with being able to set goals, being able to work hard and follow through with goals, giving them an experience of a lifetime to experience a different culture. We don't get opportunities like this every day. So, truly, thank you to all the sponsors, to the city staff, City of Palm Beach Gardens, the council and the previous council, and all of our heavy donors, the Honda, the Gardens Mall Store, Valley National Bank, the Sheriff's Department, all of those guys donated $5,000 checks and we wouldn't have been able to have this experience without them. So, uh, thank you all, and we have presents for all the councils. So, if we can get a picture, come on down, everyone. Trophy's getting engraved.
How was your experience? Go!
Amazing.
Memorable.
Outstanding.
Amazing.
Lovely.
Amazing, great.
Wow, that worked out well, thank you. Yeah, really?
This is really nice.
I'd like to share his words and echo the sentiment of thank you to all of our sponsors who made this possible. They really did pitch in and make a dream come true for all our kids, so, thank you very much. Bye-bye. Alrighty. Wasn't that wonderful? Okay. So, next on our announcements and presentations, Florida Law Enforcement Traffic Safety Awards. May I please have Chief Shannon? Hi Chief.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council members. Just wanted to take a quick opportunity again to brag a little bit about another award that your police department has achieved from the state of Florida. The annual Florida Law Enforcement Liaison Traffic Safety Challenge in partnership with the Florida Department of Transportation and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration recognizes the best overall traffic safety programs in the state of Florida. The areas of concentration include efforts to enforce traffic safety laws, educate the public about distracted and impaired driving, motorcycle safety, occupant protection, and child passenger safety, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and speed and aggressive driving. On Friday, July 13th, in Orlando, the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department was awarded first place out of 33 other agencies of similar size for our innovative and comprehensive efforts to enforce traffic safety laws and educate the public. Traffic safety campaigns organized by our traffic unit included our Click It or Ticket campaign, DUI enforcement, grant-funded pedestrian and bicycle safety programs. And additionally, every sworn member of our agency received four hours of in-service training on these traffic safety initiatives, creating a higher awareness and increasing their expertise in these specialized areas. I'd like to ask Officer Melinda Hampton to please come forward. Melinda has spearheaded the Traffic Safety Challenge for the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department for many years, and without her, this couldn't have been possible. It's a department-wide initiative, but again, Melinda has really pitched in in all of those areas I just said, especially the education and the DUI enforcement. So, we're really proud of her and proud of this award. So, I wanted to thank Melinda and thank the mayor and council. Thank you.
Okay, can we do one picture with this council?
And to continue on with the City of Palm Beach Gardens and its award-winning team, may I please bring up Chief Bissett for the Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award from the American Heart Association.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager Ferris and staff. I'd like to introduce representatives from American Heart Association, Beth and Cherie, like to come up and do a presentation. I gotta say, back-to-back awards for the fire and police is very good. We live in a great and safe city, so.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. I'm Beth Morelatos, I'm the Executive Director with the American Heart Association and Stroke Association here in Palm Beach County. And I've actually been here for the past four years doing this award, and it's great. The past three acknowledging our local Palm Beach Gardens Fire and Rescue for their attainment of our EMS Gold Plus Award, which is our highest level of recognition. It is with great, great enthusiasm that I congratulate them once again for this accomplishment. Our Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Award recognizes their commitment and success in implementing specific quality improvement measures for the treatment of patients who suffer a severe heart attack known as a STEMI. Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue has received this award, as I said, three times, and it's quite a significant accomplishment in the eyes of the American Heart Association. Every year, almost 300,000 individuals experience a STEMI heart attack. This is a heart attack that's caused by a complete blockage of blood flow to the heart that requires timely treatment. To prevent death, it's critical to restore blood flow as quickly as possible, either by surgically opening the blocked vessel or by giving a clot-busting medication. Emergency medical system providers are vital to the success of the Mission Lifeline. EMS agencies provide education in STEMI identification and access to 12 LEAD ECG machines and follow protocols derived by the American Heart Association, American Stroke Association, and American College of Cardiology. The correct tools and training allow EMS providers to rapidly identify this type of a heart attack and promptly notify the medical center and trigger an early response from the awaiting hospital personnel. I'd like to thank, or extend our sincere thanks to Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue, their entire team, Mayor Maria Marino, Fire Chief Keith Breyer, Division Chief of EMS Cory Bissett, and Dr. Ken Shepke, our medical director. Congratulations on a job well done and thank you for keeping our community safe and for the thousands of lives you save each day.
Madam Mayor, council members, city manager, this is truly an honor to be here the fourth time in a row for this, for this award. This is a mission that we do, that our crews do every single day, sort of silently in the background, protecting the citizens. And it's truly an honor to be the medical director that works with such a talented crew that is so dedicated to this and with such an outstanding city council that gives the fire department the resources that we need, an outstanding fire chief that has the vision and, and the foresight for the training, and of course, an outstanding EMS chief, and not to mention all the fantastic crew members we work with. This is truly a partnership between the entire city apparatus as well as our local hospital, Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center that does the heart catheterization on these folks when we bring it to them. It's a real honor to be working with such a talented city and such a talented EMS crew. I'm aware with a lot of EMS systems from around the state, and I gotta tell you that the world knows about Palm Beach County and Palm Beach Gardens because of the successes like this that we do here every single day. We should all be proud of what we've together accomplished, and I think we all deserve a round of applause for ourselves because we're just really cutting-edge on the safety stuff, and we're really, truly that good.
Well, if you notice, we might, we have a few young'uns in the audience, and if the council and everyone else is okay, I would like to reorder the agenda and bring the city manager report up. Would that be okay with the rest of the council?
Thank you all very much. I have only one item to bring to you tonight, but it's an extremely important one. And I'd call Chief Shannon up to explain what's going on here with a video, which is amazing. I think that you would agree, once you see this video, it is, my terminology is a coincidental miracle. And it's quite telling about our first responders and how, no matter where you are or what you're doing, or where they are or what they're doing, they're there for the public. And this one tugs at your heartstrings, although it does mine.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. Wanted to bring your attention to this kind of special incident that occurred. On Saturday, July 21st, while at the food court at the Gardens Mall, Palm Beach Gardens officers Robert Ayala and Rafael Guadalupe noticed a frantic mother holding a one-year-old child in her arms. The child had been eating and had a piece of chicken lodged in her throat, causing her to be unable to breathe. Noticing the commotion, Officers Ayala and Guadalupe immediately responded and took control of the situation. The child appeared to be turning blue. Following his training, Officer Ayala immediately took the child in his arms and administered back blows, dislodging the chicken from little Lucia's throat. Officer Guadalupe assisted Officer Ayala and assured Lucia's mother, Anna, that everything was going to be okay. We have, as Mr. Ferris mentioned, we have a video from the mall of the incident. Would like to play for you. It's quite impressive. Anna and the children are in the lower-left with the stroller. Little Lucia's in the stroller. She's 14 months old. Officers Ayala and Guadalupe up in the right-hand corner, in the corner of the mall, eating. Anna then notices, about now, you'll see her take little Lucia out, and she notices that she's choking. You'll see Officer Ayala and Guadalupe notice the commotion and immediately come over to assist, and Officer Ayala will take little Lucia here in his arms. Rather quickly, he was able to dislodge the piece of chicken. And Lucia was coughing and spitting up a little bit. Pretty traumatic incident for mom. Officer Guadalupe was assuring Anna once little Lucia had spit up, she was breathing, and just reassuring mom that she was going to be okay. Fire rescue was contacted, and eventually they also responded also.
It must be hard for you to watch that.
I was so moved by an email that Mrs. Anna Graham sent to Officer Ayala later that same day, that I brought it, I was gonna read it to you tonight, but I got much better instead. Mrs. Anna Graham, her husband Kurt, William, and little Lucia's able to join us tonight, so I'm sure she'd like to address you.
Good evening. You know, motherhood has been a dream of mine, and every person I've met in this journey has been so special. And that day, something that, you know, you never think is ever gonna happen to you, because she's been eating since she's nine months and eating a lot. And it was her favorite Chick-fil-A, you know, she's good at that one. And once I saw that she wasn't breathing, thank God for Officer Ayala, because he stepped in, I gave it her to him, and without hesitation, he saved her life. And when everything was done, he was caring and loving and made me feel like such a good mom, and did not leave until I was okay. And Lucia finished her lunch, actually. She asked for food, so we knew she was okay. So you really are an angel in our family, and we're so grateful.
I could not be prouder of these officers, and that being said, we have a certificate for life-saving to present to them tonight, along with a ribbon that they can proudly display on their uniforms.
This is what makes us proud to live in the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and just more reinforcement of how well-trained our police and fire departments are, and with all of my heart, I say thank you. So, next on the agenda is items of resident interest and Board Committee reports, and I normally don't go last, I mean, I don't go first, but I'm going to go first today because I'd like to share some news. And last week, Carl and I had the opportunity to meet Governor Scott in a reception, and I took the opportunity to ask him for some help, having to do with steeplechase on PGA and the Beeline Highway. And took my card, actually took Carl's card, my number was written on the back of it, and two hours later, I got a call from Mike Dew, who is the Secretary of the FDOT. And what has transpired is that, with the help of our staff, who are trying to find more ways than one to work out this solution, we are really progressing and finding other ways to have, and I'm not gonna say the right word, because it's, we're looking now at a perimeter wall as opposed to a sound wall, and for those of you that aren't aware, the planned completion for this project, plans, as in submitted and approved, is March 21st of 2020, and the construction award is to be July 28th, 2021. So, we don't have time to waste. We need to get this done, and I'd just like to say to staff, and also, I met with our lobbyist, that we are really trying to come up with a solution that is amenable, and hopefully FDOT will do something right. So I just wanted to share that with you. Also, I wanted to share with you that we had discussed last month about a continued police presence at our schools, and Chief Shannon, I think you have an update for us because you talked with one or the other, where'd he go? Chief Shannon?
I can fill in for Chief. We've been discussing the item, and Chief Shannon has been meeting with the school chief, and at that time, here he comes now. Their discussion led along the lines that the chief was, the school board chief of police was comfortable at this point with the staffing that he has in the middle and the high schools, and extremely grateful for the staffing that we'll be able to provide for the five elementary schools. With that, the discussion pursued the fact that our police department will increase its visibility at all of the middle and the high schools, both in vehicle and get out of the vehicle and walk, and be a part of the security at all of the high schools and middle schools. And I'll let Chief go ahead and take over from there unless I took all your thunder, Chief.
That's okay. Yesterday, we had a meeting, it was actually at a school board meeting, where Chief Kitsero from the school district rolled out a lot of his plan to the school board members. As Mr. Ferris said, right now, they're comfortable and they're very appreciative of the city for what we are offering, and it's still evolving, and although school is starting relatively soon, this was a lot to undertake in a very short amount of time. So, I did reiterate the offer from the Mayor and Council that if they needed additional assistance in the middle school and the high school, that we'd be willing to do whatever we could. So they're extremely appreciative. In fact, I was speaking with Councilmember Lit earlier at the meeting yesterday, it seemed like, for one of the reasons that they were doing, they were swearing in nine new officers, but I assured her that wasn't the reason we were there. Each and every school board member took the time to thank all of the departments that have stepped up, and they specifically, especially Chief Kitsero, wanted to send his sincere appreciation to Mr. Ferris and each and every member of our council and the mayor. They know the way that you feel, and they really, really appreciate everything that the city is doing for them.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, also, for following up. Okay, I'll stay the rest of my comments till we're done. Rochelle, would you have anything to share?
Well, it was a pretty light month for me locally. I spent a lot of time up in the Orlando area with the new grandbaby and my kids, and the biggest takeaway I had from being away from Palm Beach Gardens and coming home yesterday was, nobody does it like we do. It's just not as nice anywhere else. I got to see a lot of the different neighborhoods, the roads, the shopping centers, everything, and all I kept looking at was, we wouldn't have done that, we wouldn't have allowed that. It just wouldn't have looked like that here. So, it's good to be back, we do it right, and I'm proud to be working with the team that I'm working with to make sure that we can keep it that way.
Thank you, Rochelle. Matthew?
I'll be brief. I attended the Palm Beach North Government Affairs Committee meeting, the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, where I received an update from our state legislators, candidates forum for the judicial candidates. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to give you my opinions on the judicial candidates. And I'm looking forward to attending the Dolphins Training Camp with my son, who's going to college on, well, we're going to the training camp on Monday, and he's leaving the next Monday for college. And from what I've heard so far, the defense is looking pretty good. So, go Fins.
Mark?
Also, a quiet month on the meeting side. Basically, I can sum it up in two meetings that both happened today. Chamber of Palm Beach's Science and Technology Forum, I thought it was a meeting, but it turned out to be a lovely tour of the Flagler Museum, which I haven't been there since the day after I got married 18 years ago, so it was actually nice to be back there. And this evening, I stopped by the PGA Resort. Vinnie Cuomo is a member of our city and had a wonderful back-to-school charity event to raise funds and supplies for the schools. So that was really it. Thank you.
Carl?
I think all, or the majority of the items for public interest have already happened, so slow month, and I think we should just move on to the meeting.
Really? No, 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 I am going to, yeah, we did all the meetings and all the constituent work, and Patty will have a list, so if you want to read it in the minutes next month, you can. And with that, I would actually like to go on to the next item on our agenda, as I keep turning the pages, and I will get there eventually. We are now at our consent agenda. Did I miss one? Look at this, I did, I went right past comments from the public, I apologize. I have no cards, that's probably why I went right past comments from the public, because I have no cards.
No cards.
Okay. See? Okay. Consent agenda.
I wanted to pull Items C and D, so we can have a presentation from Alan and Kumra.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, less items pulled?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, less Items C and D.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mark, for pulling those, it does have to do with our budget. We are faced with our budget the next two months, so these are big budget questions, and a little more information isn't always a bad thing. So, may I first have the clerk read the title of C, I believe? We're gonna do these separately, correct?
No, ma'am, these are purchase awards, they don't have titles.
Okay, so are we gonna do them together, though? Presentation together or separately? We'll do them separately. Okay, purchase award for the renewal of agreement for stop-loss insurance coverage. You got the mic, Kumra.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, I'm Kumra, Purchasing and Contracts Director, and assisting me this evening is Alan Owens, our Finance Administrator. I'm gonna start with, if I'm allowed, the group life renewal first, since that's the bigger one. As you know, the city has, the city has an agreement with Blue Cross as third-party administrators for the city's group health insurance plan, which is self-funded. The original RFP which established this agreement was done in August of 2015 for three years. It included an option to renew for additional three years, and so we, after reviewing it, discussing it with our insurance consultants, Gallagher Benefit Services, we have decided to exercise that option to renew the contract for additional three years. Currently, the city pays $4.532 per employee per month for the administration of the self-funded group health plan. After Gallagher met with the Blue Cross representatives and negotiated the following rates, the next period, next fiscal year, we will pay $47.06, then the following year, $49.10, and then $50.06. All that is based on our experiences and our claims, et cetera. The rates have remained unchanged basically for the past five years, including two years of the previous agreement, the entire three years of disagreements, we've had flat rates for five years. They are still in line with what is paid competitively by the other public entities in South Florida like Boca and Delver Beach, et cetera. Florida Blue will continue to provide an annual contribution of $50,000 to the city as part of the city's wellness program. The intent is to, if you keep healthy employees, there'll be lower claims. Staff is recommending approval for an additional three years, and this is a funded item in the city's annual budget. Questions?
Any questions? Mark?
No, I don't have any questions. I just wanted this statement or this item to be brought up to the public, because it is a big-ticket item, and it is going up, and we had stability for five years, and now we're seeing some inching upwards, which is part of the trend. In our little business, we've noticed the same thing. So, I asked some pertinent questions yesterday, you answered them, so I just wanted to make sure that we all were on the same page and the public had an opportunity to hear what is happening with the health insurance benefit. Thank you.
All right, so I'll go to the next presentation.
To supplement the group health insurance plan, we have a stop-loss insurance coverage, and what it does is, it acts as additional insurance for claims that exceed a certain limit. And each year, we have to renew this, this agreement, when we established it had five years, and we renew it every year. And it's based, the rates are based on our experience for the previous year. Last year, we renewed this, and certain things have remained the same. The fees, the stop-loss fees have remained relatively flat since 2013, so for five years, we have been enjoying very low rates. The deductible remains at $225,000. The maximum per person is still unlimited, so there's no limit to how much claims you can make. There's a projected premium increase this year for the next fiscal year of 35.5%, and the reason for that is that we had a couple of high-cost claims that exceeded the deductible. However, the rates are still lower than Symmetra's best-in-class for the new businesses by at least 10%. Staff is recommending approval for the next fiscal year. Questions?
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Good job.
Thank you, Kumra.
All right, thank you.
Always good with the numbers. Alan, also you. Thank you very much. Just, as we said earlier, and we've said over the years, that being self-insured has saved us several million dollars, so thank you for making sure we have the right administrator for this policy.
But it still doesn't keep you immune from rate increases.
Oh, that's true. That's very true. All right, so now I need a motion and a second to approve the items that were pulled from consent.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Items C and D of the consent.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case, Resolution 44, 2018, Planned Community Development Amendment for Avenue PCD. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the recording of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examining.
Just, as we said earlier, and we've said over the years, that being self-insured has saved us several million dollars. So, thank you for making sure we have the right administrator for this policy.
But it still doesn't keep you immune from rate increases.
Oh, that's true. That's very true. All right, so now I need a motion and a second to approve, approve the items that were pulled from consent.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items C and D of the consent.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case, Resolution 44-2018, Planned Community Development Amendment for Avenue PCD. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the recording of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Not yet. We're, we, that's later on. Uh, we are now in public hearing, and our first item is Resolution 37, which is a non-Quasi-Judicial item, and may I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 37-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, updating the schedule of fees and charges for various services rendered by the City of Palm Beach Gardens for its citizens and other members of the public for fiscal year 2018, 2019, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the record, Mary Anderson Pickle, I'm the Deputy Finance Administrator, and I'm here tonight to present Resolution 37 for you. I also have Charlotte Przynski, our Leisure Services Administrator, available should you have any questions on the recreation changes. Each year at this time, the city, um, takes a review of all its master fees and charges and adopts revisions to the schedule via a resolution. Tonight's resolution approves modifications to the fiscal year 2018, 2019 schedule, and it includes recommended changes from departments to ensure the fees charged are sufficient to cover the cost of providing the services. For the planning and zoning, the proposed changes include the removal of DRI and other fees that have become obsolete and are no longer applicable. The Recreation Department undertook a very comprehensive review of their entire fee structure. Their proposed changes are intended to simplify the fee schedule, remove redundant information, review the non-resident rental rates, and most importantly, provide flexibility to set the rates to the, cover the cost of providing the services while remaining competitive in the market. As I mentioned, the proposed changes would be effective October 1st, 2018, and copies of the schedule are available, no charge, in the city clerk's office and also will be posted to the website. And staff is recommending approval of Resolution 37-2018 as presented.
Thank you very much. I do not have any comment cards, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I have a question, uh, for Charlotte, I guess. Basically, the same question I asked this morning, just for, for public purposes. It, it seems that, um, many of the non-resident fees with respect to recreation are going down, and some of the resident fees are going up, but if you could explain, um, how that came about and, and why there's such a big difference in how much the resident, the non-resident fees are going down? And also, the question I had about that the golf, tennis, and, um, and the, and the pool schedules are separate, and when they will be published and how those fees will be determined, and the public will have access to them.
Good evening, Council. Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator, for the record. The first question, you will notice that some of the non-resident fees have been reduced. Over the years, those fees have risen dramatically, and what's happened is it priced us out of the market. So, virtually in the last sixteen months, that service has not been bought by any non-resident, whether they're looking at renting a room or taking a lesson, a private lesson for aquatic center, and it's really because we've priced ourselves out of the market. Also, there was no consistency in how that fee was set above the resident rate, so what we've done is we've brought them back into a market-competitive situation, and they're now all set at thirty, well, twenty or thirty percent above the non, or above the resident. So, they're still paying more, but this way, we actually hope to find more consumer non-residents to come join us in those services. So, I think that was question one. Question two, um, some of the resident rates did go up. Again, that is to be, cover our full costs. As you know, we are a special revenue-functioning department. Everything that we bring in, we spend on operating dollars. So, to remain competitive, we needed to do some market adjustments. Um, it's just like a small business. We have to cover our costs, but also we have to be competitive, or we actually price ourselves out. So, some of those fees did go up to remain competitive. You will find across the board, our fees that have been taken off here and that will be set by market rate, or just like we do in golf or tennis, or even our programming. An art class fee is set based upon what it costs for an instructor and the additional supplies. So, by being able to set those rates, not solid in this, but actually solid in business practices, helps us sustain our special revenue fund. Did I, did I hit them all? Good.
How often will that be available to the public when we use, we see that?
I apologize. I forgot that. All of the fees will be transparently out there for the public. They will be announced on our website. They'll be announced in the four productions that we do a year. We do three newsletters and then the camp newsletter. So, you'll find all of that information out there. We will probably set them seasonally, just like we do at golf or tennis. That way, depending on what activity's happening, what, um, consumables are being used, expenses are being happening, you'll see those come out.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. At this time, since we have no more questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now on to Resolution 38, which is also non-Quasi-Judicial. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 38-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Palm Beach Gardens Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2018 in order to receive the annual allocation of Community Development Block Grant Funding, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing, and we have a staff presentation?
We do. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and, uh, council members. My name is Joanne Skrye, Planning, uh, Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. I have been sworn in, and I'm here to present the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 18. Um, as you may recall from last year, the city is eligible to work directly with HUD to receive federal dollars through the Community Development Block Grant Program for community planning purposes. And as part of the agreement that we have with HUD, we are required to submit an annual action plan and application each year. And so, this, uh, request is to submit that plan to HUD, and the exciting news to report is that the city is eligible for two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, which is up about thirty-four thousand dollars from last year, very exciting to see. The strategy for Fiscal Year 18 is to continue the single-family rehab program, which funds exterior improvements for low-to-moderate-income households, such as energy-efficient roofs, impact-resistant windows and doors, and exterior paint. And I just, I'm happy to report that we have eleven homes completed under the program, two that are currently under construction, and five new applications. This is a map that we presented to the council last year to, uh, demonstrate our progress thus far, and I'm so excited to share that we have completed so many more homes, um, in the central core part of the city, and a lot of the newer applications that we're receiving are, uh, branching out into the different neighborhoods. So, the program is, uh, picking up momentum, and the word is getting out there. I have a couple before-and-after photos to share of some of the projects that we've completed. Uh, this one may look familiar because we, uh, partnered with Solid Waste Authority to complete the paint, so we were able to fund the majority of improvements, um, the exterior improvements through CDPG. As you can see from the photo up in the right, the, the entire roof was covered with basically a tarp, and there was even still a hole basically into the structure. And, uh, this home received a new roof and some exterior, um, impact windows, and we did receive the paint from Solid Waste Authority. Another severely damaged roof deferred maintenance and, uh, just lack of repairs from damage, I believe from the hurricane. So, this roof took, uh, some repaired rust, uh, rust damage as well. We installed a new roof, including fascia, and this damage that you see right here is visible from the right of way. This was actually referred to us from code enforcement, and you can see the new roof is all cleaned up. And this is the last home I want to share. This home received impact-resistant windows and paint, and just is, uh, basically a whole new look from the street. Very nice to see this, this home just refreshed. This slide shows the income limits that the applicants must, uh, comply with in order to be eligible with the program broken down by household side, size, and, oop, well, the application is available on the Planning and Zoning website under the Planning Division, and all the information is available on the website as well. I just want to thank all the different city departments that help, um, in the administration and carrying out of this program. Without, um, all of their help, it would be very difficult to accomplish these, uh, great things for the residents. And with that, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you very much. I have no cards, so I will bring it back. And do we have any comments? Or wait, may I get a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll bring it back for comments. Any comments?
Carl just told me he was gonna volunteer to paint a few more houses.
I painted that greenhouse.
You did paint that house.
Yeah, we were out there, did that. It's just pretty cool to see how far in the last two years with the new council that you, not, not that it wasn't absent from the previous council, but these stars on this map are starting to pop up everywhere, and, and, and the more information we get out to the community, that greenhouse was, uh, prior to a plat, I believe. Plat one was the oldest, and this was older than a plat area, right?
Yeah, I think it was plat.
I thought it was not even a plat. It was such an old area.
Um, it's Palm Beach Square, so I think that is prior to the plats, yep.
Right. So, there was a charge at the beginning of my campaigning several years ago to do something in this area, and I think through conversations that it's now really showing that it's taken, it's taken legs, so that's nice. Thank you.
Not to look a gift horse in the mouth, but why did we qualify for more money this year because we did such a good job allocating it last year, or because our houses are getting older and, and the area, they, they recognize that this area needs more work?
Well, we're eligible because we have been compliant with our spending requirements. We've been spending money each year, so that's one aspect, but our population actually went up. I think our most recent 2017 estimate was fifty-five thousand people. It's a population-based formula grant, so.
And wasn't this not going to be funded, and then it got changed somehow, or was it just a, uh, can you explain that a little bit? Because I didn't know the nuts and bolts of that conversation.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. There's been a lot of, uh, reporting in the media about it, that the Community Development Block Grant Fund was not gonna be, was, it was not in the president's proposed budget for this year, but Congress did elect to continue funding for the program, so it has continued to be funded at this point.
Thank you very much. And I do know that, but Mark and I sit on the, um, the Palm Beach North Economic Development Committee, which looks at, they're not calling it affordable housing anymore. It's now being called essential services housing, and, you know, this is a key component in keeping our residents here and making it affordable for them, and we do have a cross-section of residents here, and it's important that we're involved and that they, they feel like they can come to the city for some help.
Yeah, the residents that we have assisted have been so grateful and so thankful, so I really appreciate it.
Well, hearing no further discussion. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Motion passes. Okay. Now, we are on to the Quasi-Judicial portion of our agenda, Resolution 44. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 44-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the Avenue Plan Community Development PCD Master Plan for Modifications to the Approved Internal Parcel Boundaries, Internal Roadway Network Development Standards and Conditions of Approval. The Avenue PCD consists of four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three acres, more or less, and is located on the north side of North Lake Boulevard, east of Great View Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing, and may I have any expertise, please?
I spoke with Ken.
I spoke with Rosa and Ken. I went out to the site last year, and I had another meeting with Rosa last year.
Okay. Mark?
I spoke with Rosa and Ken on Tuesday, and multiple visits out to the site as a resident.
Carl?
And I've spoke with the applicant as well.
As I have also. Thank you. So, may I have the petitioner presentation? Hi, now. Am I gonna time you tonight?
Good evening, Kent Two with Urban Design Kill Day Studios. I have been sworn in, Madam Mayor, and this will take less than ten minutes. Okay, and I'm gonna walk through it, and, uh, so, here we are, three or four years later, down the road on Avenue. What you're gonna see tonight is kind of the beginning of the future of what's happening with Avenue. When we did this plan five or six years ago, things have changed. So, now what you're seeing tonight is kind of the beginning of those changes. That was really started to narrow things down because of permitting and other items associated with the site. So, just a quick introduction, because some of you weren't on the city council when this got approved, and also for the neighbors in the area, the site is here, located on North Lake Boulevard, south of Beeline. It is four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three acres. It's approximately six miles west of I-95. It's across the street, or it's due west of Agent Tree and across the street from the acreage. Here are some of the surrounding communities. This map is a bit dated. The yellow line is the boundaries of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, but I believe that line now needs to go here, if you can see my mouse on the screen, as you've incorporated Bay Hill and Rustic Lakes. So, the application for the, the application that is before you, or the PCD of what has already been approved, is there, is two thousand four hundred and seven acres are in preserve. There are twenty-six hundred and ninety single-family homes, nine hundred and sixty age-restricted homes. Age-restricted means that they're restricted for active adults age fifty-five and older, two hundred and fifty multifamily, four hundred thousand square feet of commercial, two hundred thousand square feet of medical office, one-point-eight-million-square-feet professional office, and a host of other, a host of other items, particularly a fifty-five-acre dedication to the city for a park site, and a sixty-acre dedication for, uh, recreation space, and a host of other items. So, a quick project update. So, the project has had an administrative amendment done. The administrative amendment was approved last year. There had been permits issued for this site. The Army Corps of Engineer has issued a permit. South Florida Water Management District has issued their environmental resource permit, and when you drive by the site today, you will notice that there is earthwork commencing on the site. So, the project is beginning, and slowly but surely, hopefully, will be coming before you in the future with a plat. The plat is in review, in the final stage of review. We plan on resubmitting here in the next week on that plat, and we hope to be in front of you sometime in the fall. We also have a site plan, two site plans in process. Site plan number one is a market-rate residential project for family homes, and then the second one, which is a four-hundred-and-eighty-five-unit age-restricted project. Both of those are in your site plan approval process, and we expect for those to come before you in the next quarter. The other items that are in process is the Avenue Road, Spine Road, and the Avenue Connector Road. The landscape plans are being perfected and will be submitted, and also forthcoming, we are working on them now, the Avenue Clubhouse, which is a common-area clubhouse, similar to what you see at Alton, is, uh, in process and will hopefully be submitted in the next few weeks. And, uh, as of a week or two ago, we requested a pre-application conference for the Avenue Town Center. So, a whole host of projects are gonna be coming before you. You will be tired of me in a few months. So, what is being proposed tonight, though? Are modifications to the plan to, to tighten things up as our permits have come in and as our design has evolved. There are PCD master boundary adjustments, which include roadways and parcel alignments, revised conditions of approval, internal roadway modifications, landscape changes, and I'm gonna walk through these in detail. So, first thing, internal roadway modifications. Identified on the screen is the existing master plan. You'll notice in red are two existing roads. We have modified those roads, and you'll see the road shifted to the south here, the connector road. It became a smaller street with a smaller section, um, based on traffic, and then also the road to the north changed and headed in this direction. And the north part of the site- In the north part of the site, the Avenir Connector Road, identified on the oval in your screen, the Avenir Connector Road, we have received a variance from the Florida Department of Transportation, and now know where that connection point will go. It has moved further west and also required a modification to the road. You can see the road is fairly straight in this design. The revised design, it curves a little bit to the left or to the west, and then heads north. That roadway actually impacted the amount of preserve that we have on this site because it got a little bit longer, because it curved. You know, it's hard to tell, that road's 4.14 miles from North Lake Boulevard to the top, so the scale of this is, is fairly significant. It modified the, it modified the preserve area by about .4 acres. We have made that number up. The number will remain at 2,407 acres in preserve. In the bottom right-hand side of your screen, this is driveway number six. Driveway number six straddled the residential parcel and the town center parcel. We're requesting you tonight to allow us to move it west about 100 feet, so it ingresses and egresses into the town center district. The current master plan doesn't have a connection road between the town center and the road to the east. Our request is to add a road to the town center to the east. That'll be a connection road to allow for the residents on the east side to have the ability to get to the town center. And here's kind of a cross-section of what that roadway will look like. A nice pedestrian-oriented street with walking paths, a 12-foot path and an eight-foot path on both sides, and then we'll have a significant component of landscaping there to create a nice little streetscape. The other change, which is a very good comment that we received from staff during our design changes, there was actually a con, a confluence of streets in this general area, so we decided to handle that a little different way. We added something called, well, it's an oval about, which is basically elongated roundabout. And here you can see the elongated roundabout that's going to go in that area. That roundabout, or that oval about, is 171 feet wide and 300 feet long, which equates to a football field. So it's a very significant feature for this project. There are several streets that come in. The Future Street to the City Park is here on the left-hand side. The Future Avenir Clubhouse, so you haven't seen it, you can get a little sneak peek on the north side, you'll see where it engages the street. This is the access point to that. And then on the right-hand side is going south to North Lake Boulevard, and then is that road that we just discussed, the town center district road goes to the west. The oval about has a significant amount of landscaping and design with, with shade structures and seating structures, a natural area in the common area in the center, seating areas, and these large, open, green spaces to be in active use. The sidewalk will connect from the clubhouse through the center of the oval about, and then to the main connection point for the walking path to the town center district. There are some parcel boundary changes. The parcel boundary changes, the first one is to modify the town center district. The town center, we've made it bigger. It is 50 acres, we've made it to go to 83 acres. This is the existing town center, identified in red, and you'll see the change as I put the new master plan on. Made it a little bit bigger, we're adding some areas in there. There's going to be a large common park, and we've added that in there as a, as a significant feature. There will be 250 multifamily townhomes, and also a significant component of commercial. So we've increased the acreage of the town center district, decreased the acreage of the residential. The school site, on the left-hand side of your screen in the oval, is the school site. That school site was a 15-acre land dedication to the School Board of Palm Beach County. The School Board has determined that they do not need this site as an elementary school site. We have entered into an agreement with the School Board to pay them 1.39 million dollars so we can have the site back. The elementary school site now has been eliminated from the plan. We are, however, retaining the ability to have a 600-school site somewhere in this project in the future. This is a long-term project. We don't know what's going to happen in the next 20 years, but we're retaining the ability to have a 600-school elementary site, school site on this site, potentially could be a private school or a charter school in the future. The economic parcel on the master plan on the right-hand side, this is the economic parcel that is owned by the City of Palm Beach Gardens. It was kind of an awkward shape when we really started looking at it, it was a rectangle. We've modified that, and it is now has much more frontage, as you can see on the screen, and a much more usable shape for the future economic parcel within the City of Palm Beach Gardens. That economic parcel has been dedicated, is now currently owned by the City of Palm Beach Gardens. On the right-hand side of your screen are the park and civic dedication. One was 60 acres and the other one was 55 acres for a total of 115, at the request of the city, a very good idea. We're combining those two items together, so the park and civic recreation site can overlap one another as you go through your design for that parcel of land sometime in the future. And here you can see them combined together. Seacoast Utility Authority has requested a site, a two-and-a-half-acre site, it's identified in red for their potential use in the future. We have agreed to that site, it is now part of the master plan. The agricultural area on the far west side of the site, we modified it to allow it to be more usable. We've added identifications of where the entry features will go. You will have the opportunity to review the first entry features with site plan number one when it comes before you. The development standards, some of the development standards have changed. The first development standard that we're asking for a change is we're requesting the ability to allow for a golf course sometime in the future, and potentially a club within our facility. We don't know if we're going to do that, but we want to have the opportunity to ask for it. We also have the same request for recreational use. The design of communities have changed. There are certain type of outdoor recreation uses that are potentially in the future for this, and we want to have the opportunity to ask for outdoor recreational uses. We're also agreeing to allow for government uses within the economic development parcel. It is limited to five acres of land. There are some changes on the landscape program that is, that are in front of you to be more Florida-friendly. And then finally, we are allowing or requesting to allow for a golf use potentially within the civic and recreation parcel. So other modifications to the development order, as I said earlier, the request to buy out the school site, adjusting some of the commercial timelines. The plat dedication language for Avenir Connector Road, and this is an interesting one. The Avenir Connector Road was required to be platted early on in the project. We have worked with staff to come up with a plating mechanism to allow us to plat to the conservation line, and then when we finally get everything worked out with CSX up here, we would be able to record the rest of the plat. It didn't make sense to record that roadway, because we don't know exactly where it's going to go today. It could move a couple feet one way or a couple feet the other. And with that, I'll close my presentation and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Carl, did you kind of?
I tried to, but my phone started yelling at me.
Good job. Thank you, Ken. All right, let me go back here. Does anyone have any questions for Ken? Or do you want to wait and hear the staff presentation? Does staff have anything to add?
Staff has prepared a presentation, and we are happy to make it. However, most of the slides are duplicative of the applicant, so at this point, we are happy to also answer any questions, or if the council wishes, we can go through the staff's presentation.
I'm good with the petitioner's presentation. Anybody else? Okay. I have no comment cards, so I don't have to call anyone to the podium, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second, please?
I move that we adopt Resolution 44, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion. I'm sure people have questions.
As always, Ken, you gave a thorough, thoughtful, and comprehensive presentation. Thank you very much. Now, it's my pleasure to make this motion on behalf of Avenir. I think we've all gotten to know the owners of Avenir, they're civically involved, they're community-minded, and they are brilliant people, and I can't wait to see what they're going to develop on this property, because I know they're good people, who do very high-quality work, and will make our community a better place in which to live, so that, that's why I supported it.
Michelle, do you have questions?
Um, I, most of my questions were answered at the agenda review this morning. I did express concern, dismay, that the school district decided to pull the school out. As was mentioned, it had nothing to do with the owners of the property or the developers of the property, and they still intend to keep that, that spot for it. It's just disconcerting that a development with 3,000 homes is not going to have its own elementary school, and the kids will have to go to the acreage, but I appreciate your keeping that site in reserve. I think the combination of the two parcels for rec and civic made a lot of sense, as did moving the driveway, so that the town center will have access in and out that does not have to go through the development in, in any way, and adding the other roads. I'm hopeful that the CSX agreements will go through, and that will give us a brand-new intersection on the Beeline, a full intersection on the Beeline, as opposed to what the other option would be. So I think the report was, was well-done, and really didn't have too many questions when I went, myself, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Well, my biggest concern was the School Board declining the site. With all the stuff going on in the School Board, you'd think that they would want to have access to a public school, but that's not our decision to make, it's theirs. My biggest concern was make sure there's no additional density, traffic, tax burden on the residents of the city, and there's not. This is just simplifying some of the things, adjusting some of the plans. I'm really excited to see the town center. Rosa, you had made a comment that you guys are going to be most likely keeping that site. I'm excited to see how it's going to turn out. We had a little discussion yesterday about trying to see the future of retail, but I'm sure that the, the plans that you're going to submit will be something that will be, you know, akin to what Palm Beach Gardens is looking for, something that'll have some fun changes and different things to be, and not just another set of Chipotles down the street. Not that we don't like Chipotle, but, you know, that's my point. But no, otherwise, I'm, I'm happy to hear the future. Thank you.
Carl?
My same concern was the same as everybody else, was the school. We know we're going to amend, adjust, to create something better in the long term, but I wanted to ask, you said it's a 600 children's school, and is that going to be the, the long-term vision of Avenir? And if so, is that going to be in concrete? And does the city have any input on making sure that that area is dedicated to a school? So, there is something there.
From, from staff's perspective, the ability to provide the school is still listed as an optional permitted use up to 600 students. There is no specific parcel that is dedicated, but it is within the ability for the applicant to provide a school within the list of permissible uses, and it is our understanding that the applicant does wish to have that opportunity to create a mixed-use community and a vibrant community. So it's our understanding, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant, but in their discussions to us, they, they long desire to have that. Really, this was a School Board's decision to eliminate the public school, but it does not eliminate the ability for a private or a charter school in the future, and I don't know if Ken wants to chime in.
I think it, it's the feel of the council, as long, even if you move it, tweak it, make it bigger or smaller, as long as there's some sort of commitment to the children in that area, you know? That's, I think we all kind of echoed that here. Other than that, we're all absorbed in this project, and it's constant conversation, so we're excited to hear you for 10 minutes at a time as we go forward. Nothing personal.
Well, I'd like to commend staff and Ken for a very thorough presentation, and it was, there is a lot covered in here in our 19-page summary, and that we're a long way away from when this first got its first reading, which was before any of us were on council. Second reading was my second month on council when this was approved, so we've come a long way, and you, I have to commend the applicants, because you have worked very well with the city, and, and as I said earlier, when, when I first approved, was one of the five members that approved this. We could have done it right, or we could have done it wrong, and I think we've done it right. And what we're doing by working with you and you having benchmarks, so it's not all residential at once, it's not all commercial at once, by having benchmarks where you have residential and commercial and industrial, you're making a, a little city that is actually going to be self-sustained, so you're capturing those trips. So the traffic that everybody is concerned with, which, as I want to always remind people, this is a 20-year build, much of that traffic will be captured in that community. Natalie and I had the interesting luxury of presenting last month to the Palm Beach County Planning Council, and one of the important things we talked about was retail, and the fact that 20% of the ad valorem taxes that are paid in our city are from retail establishments, so the, the idea of retail being out there and supporting your houses is a wonderful thing. I do want to talk about the school for a second, and I think that the reason that we're having this discussion about the school might have been missed, it's the fact that we now have some housing for older persons, so the estimate of children on property has gone down, and that was why the School Board decided to not have an elementary school there. Am I correct in my assessment? Okay, thank you. Let me see what other questions I might have had. How are we doing with CSX, by the way? You knew somebody was going to have to ask that question.
I thought, I was hoping to get away, we, we have been in constant contact with CSX and continuing to work with them. We're moving in the right direction. It's a, obviously a very complicated matter, and we're working on how, the way it works is you have to find crossings to close, and we are working through that very diligently, and we hope there'll be a resolution when the grander resolution of North Lake is resolved.
So far, you've had, you've found two to close, and there's one left? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we, well, we sure hope that, we sure hope they agree to two.
Okay. And a golf community?
Potentially in the future, yes, ma'am. We are, we are looking at it, there hasn't, we have been looking at that in detail, but at this point, we're not prepared to disclose any plans.
No problem. And a water-themed recreation? You know I have to come up with these questions.
I tried to dance around that before, because I didn't really want to have to explain it, but there has been a new trend in communities to create water facilities that are really unique, and there is a trade program, a trademark one called Crystal Lagoon, and it's worth a second to Google that. It's a really neat recreation facility, and in essence, it's a large pool that has very unique wa, very unique spacing. It's very long, it's a place to float down, it's a really unique concept that is really becoming a new standard for certain communities, for active communities. So, we just want the opportunity to ask for it in the future. It's, no plans are set in stone, but we just think it's really neat. And if you get bored, Google Crystal Lagoon, and it will give you a good example of what it looks like.
Thank you. And it's very hard to do a project that you know it's going to take 20 years and get it totally 100% right on the first try, and that's why you come here, that's why we have waivers, that's why we have changes, so thank you for taking the time to do that. Just one more question. The spine road that's going to go north-south, what is the benchmark for that completion?
The, so the construction for the, is prior to Phase Two, which is based on traffic trips, and I, and I don't know them off the top of my head, but is, the project is broken into four phases.
Okay, so pretty much halfway through the project, then?
It's, it's a little bit before halfway, yes, ma'am.
So people looking for that spine road aren't going to be seeing it, like, in the next five years?
Um, you never know. I hope, I hope they do, and I'm sure our clients do, too. That means sales have gone great, and, and the commercial parcel's been built, and then so, you never know. A lot just depends on, on how the economy works out.
Well, again, thank you very much, and all of you in the back of the room, thank you very much. You've been very patient, and you have worked well with the city, and I have not, I've heard nothing but great things from anybody, and I do appreciate this. As I said, this is the last jewel in the city's crown, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, do we have any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, non- quasi-judicial, judicial, Resolution 47. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 47, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida.
Florida, approving interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County in order to annex certain segments of Northlake Boulevard and transfer traffic regulatory authority over said segments to Palm Beach County, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I will open the hearing, and may I have the staff presentation, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, I'm Martin Fitz, Senior Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a request for an interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County to provide, to allow the city to be able to provide a uniform law enforcement and public safety services along Northlake Boulevard, from east of, from the eastern right-of-way of Greatview Boulevard, all the way to Carlton Oaks. This is, will be done by the county agreeing to annex the two sections of Northlake Boulevard right-of-way that are immediately adjacent to the Avenir project that we just talked about. And the third section is a, the subject of a memorandum of understanding between the Sheriff's Department and the city council, and the city police department, to provide those life safety services within that area. This does, Palm Beach County does agree to annex into the city for those two sections. This does not actually do the annexation at this time. After the agreement is finalized, the new staff will come back with the actual process for the annexation. The county will retain ownership of the right-of-way, and also the maintenance responsibility for both the road and the right-of-way. But the city, the end result is that the city will be able to provide the governmental services and public safety services on all the segments of the, of Northlake Boulevard. With that, staff is available for questions, and staff is recommending approval of Resolution 47.
Thank you very much. I have no comment cards, so I will close the hearing. May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 47, 2018.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion, any questions?
I asked this morning, I'll, I'll ask again, if you could explain the rationale for having that, from, from the police perspective, why this is an important thing for us to do? I agree that it is, and I just, you gave a really good explanation this morning about how that can help us.
We feel like the City of Palm Beach Gardens Police Department can provide enhanced services and additional enforcement that would make the, the travel along that section of Northlake much safer. So, we would also handle any of the, the traffic incidences or crashes that occur, and also be able to do enforcement and some other enhancements that we think will make it safer.
And right now, we have different jurisdictions on the different parts of the roads, so it's sometimes confusing who responds and where, and who can do what where.
Correct, very confusing.
Any other questions?
We're going to narrow it down just to us and West Palm. I'm sorry. We're going to narrow it down just to jurisdictional, as us and West Palm Beach. They do have, they do have a portion just east of the. Just the two of us. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
No question, other than the fact that we do get a lot of complaints, as we all know about the speed on Northlake Boulevard, so anything we can do to try to mitigate some of that. And Carl was just commenting that we don't always like to give out tickets, but we also don't want to see people going 80 miles an hour, which is what they tend to do. So, hopefully, we can slow the traffic down a bit, so.
Thank you. All done? Okay. Having no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Motion carries five-zero. Okay, on to resolutions. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 45, 2018, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving and ratifying a memorandum of understanding with the Police Benevolent Association with regard to all city police officers, sergeants, and communications operators to amend the current collective bargaining agreement and Article 32 salaries, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Presentation?
If I may. Mayor, council members, I think we'd all agree that we have the best police officers, sergeants, and communication operators, certainly in Palm Beach County, and I think in the state. They're best qualified, they're the best trained, because I know they serve more hours in training than any other department in the state. We have the best training facilities, the best equipment for officer safety, and they have the opportunity to work in the greatest city in the state of Florida. With that, we have a responsibility to be able to recruit and retain these officers, and give them a competitive wage in today's current environment. Recently, there's been an effort by the Sheriff's Office to fill 75 openings, and they're doing so by trying to recruit some experienced officers, and recruiting them beyond the beginning salary, about halfway through their range at the beginning salary, around $63,480 is what the information is that we've received. Upon hearing this information, I directed the Human Resources Department to conduct the salary market rate and do an analysis, and let me know where we're at as far as our competitive salary is a concern. With that, knowing that we have a three-year contract of which we're in, that will expire in 2019, September 30. That contract provides for a 6% salary increase effective October 1 of this year, and they've had two other 6% increase in the other two years. The law enforcement labor market today is changing dramatically. The competition for officers is very high at this point. What we asked is that the PBA, the union for the police, for these three, the police officers, sergeants, and the communication operators, sit down and talk to us about where we need to go based upon our salary market rate to be competitive with the current market. We did meet, we did negotiate. We looked at the 6% that was due by contract this coming October. It was determined by our analysis that we needed an additional 6% to be able to be competitive and to retain our quality officers, sergeants, and communication operators under the same unit. And so, therefore, based upon our analysis, we're asking the council to approve a memorandum of understanding that actually effectuates a 12% increase immediately upon approval, starting August the 6th, which will be in the paycheck, starting their paychecks on August 24th, is when they would realize it. Keep in mind that on July 11th, the PBA members voted in favor of ratification. Also, keep in mind that we have collective bargaining meetings starting after the first of the year, for additional three years. And there's a lot of things that we'll, we'll need to be addressing at the table at that time. But for right now, we're asking that the council ratified an immediate, beginning August 6th, ratify the 12% increase immediately. So, we're moving the 6% up from October to now, adding another 6% for a total of 12, in a, for, in order for us to retain and be competitive and be fair to our police officers, our sergeants, and our communication operators. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Rochelle?
I, you know, commend this, you and the staff for, for going ahead and doing this. I think it's important. On our surveys, that's what we hear from the public, that our police and fire, our central services are what they consider most important, and especially in the environment we're in right now, I definitely think that this is a good move, and proud of us for going ahead and doing it.
Any comments, Matthew?
Yeah, I definitely support this motion on behalf of our police. They're diligent, they're dedicated, and they're very hard-working, and I am proud to have them protecting my family, protecting me, and I will definitely support this motion.
Mark?
Well, there's no doubt that good people cost money, and, and if we weren't as competitive as we should have been, then, then I'm happy to make the adjustments. This is a large hit to the budget, but this is what we pay our taxes for, so I'm happy to support that. But, you know, just as, as a reminder, that the impact of the city is, is $277,000 this year, and $1.6 million for next. Money well-spent, but it is something that we're going to have to keep in mind when we talk about our budget. So, thank you guys for bringing the issue to the table, and thank you, Ron, for negotiating that with the PBA.
Carl? Your brethren?
I mean, a no-brainer for what direction I'd be going. Just in the last couple council meetings with relation to school security, and now we're going to encompass Northlake Boulevard, we continuously ask more and more out of our officers, and we're the top of the food chain as far as municipalities, and we're just as good as the Sheriff's Department, and we afford our officers as much as we can, and we're going to make sure that we're, they are exactly where they need to be, and maybe try and push a little bit more. So, this is where we need to be. We want to keep our employees happy, and we want to make sure we have the top of the food chain when it comes to our cops and our community.
Ron, do you have anything you need to add?
I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I neglected to say that as a result of this increase, we will move from number five as far as the competitive salary ranges are concerned, to number two, second only to Boca. So, I think that puts us today in a competitive, you know, in a competitive market as it is today. This market changes every time a contract is signed, so it's something that we have to keep on top of and not, not fall behind like this again.
Thank you.
And, and sorry, how many officers are actually leaving our force to join the Sheriff's Office after this?
Well, all I, you know, all I can tell you is what we heard, but as of today, we've had one resignation. We heard that there were many more considering it, and we did get some inquiries from the Sheriff's Department looking at personnel records. But today, since we started this, there's one resignation that I'm aware of. Yes?
You know, you guys, there's going to be officers that are going to come on board, and within the first few years, want to move around to a larger city, or maybe a city that they love, or maybe a larger agency that they can do marine patrol, you know, helicopter, larger spot, whatever they're, so we're going to, it's, by nature, there's going to be a small percentage of turnover, just because people like to move around until they get where they want to get. But if we stay competitive and stay right at the curve, knowing that I did most of my adult life serving this city, you don't want to go anywhere once you're here. So, we might as well be the tip of the spear financially, as well as what we offer them as well. So, there's going to be a natural turnover, and that's okay, but those people that want to leave, they can leave.
Well said. And I do want to add just a little input here. Thank you all, by the way, for being here, and thank you for voting on this. As Rochelle said earlier, this was one of the top things in the survey of our city residents, that police, fire, and recreation, those are the three services they look for. And the City of Palm Beach Gardens, we are in the service business, and those are the services that we provide. And in doing so, we provide excellent, award-winning services, award-winning facilities. The equipment that we have, that we supply to our officers, both police and fire, is beyond compare, and I, I believe you all are in probably one of the safest cities in the county, and we are happy that you're deciding to stay here. And this will be a bit of a hit to our budget, and it will be, if I'm not mistaken, Ron, a little bit of reserves to cover this? A little bit of reserves to cover this? Yes. And that is why the city has over $23 million in reserves, and I think there is a plan in our budget, and if you all know that our budget is online, and there is a five-year, we have our five-year plan, and where money is going to come out of the reserve and then get funded, refunded, replenished later on. But it, this is why we have reserves. There are important times when we, when we need to use that money. So, I've said enough, and I, I am all in favor, so at this moment, I think we're done with discussion. Or Carl, you have anything to ask?
No, ma'am, I just, I think we have to have a motion. You need a motion, enough.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 45, 2018.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much. All right. We are moving swiftly through this agenda. Does the city attorney have a report?
Yes, I actually do have a city attorney report this evening, and I'll make it very brief. As you're all aware, you know, we, after, in response to our, the annexation of the Bay Hill Communities and, and Rustic Lakes, Rustic Lakes, there are four residents of Rustic Lakes that challenged the annexation. They did, they did so untimely. They filed a petition for it assert sixty-nine days beyond their deadline. Inexplicably, the circuit court took jurisdiction anyway, even though they had failed to, to do so, invoke the jurisdiction within the 30 days. And they issued an order to show cause, and in response to that, I filed a petition for writ of prohibition with the Fourth District Court of Appeal. You file a writ of prohibition to seek an, a writ prohibiting a, you stop somebody from doing something. In this case, it's most appropriately used to prohibit a lower tribunal, in this case, the circuit court, from taking jurisdiction and acting extrajurisdictionally when they, when their jurisdiction wasn't properly invoked. Inexplicably, the Fourth District Court of Appeal denied my writ of prohibition. And in response to that, I regrouped, and then I promptly filed a motion for rehearing, which is rarely granted, but you can only file, you should only file a motion for rehearing when the court misapprehends the law or misapplies the law or controlling precedent. In this case, that is what occurred. They, they cited the wrong, thankfully, they cited a case in their order denying our, our petition, our writ. And in so doing, they cited a case that was, was just incorrect. It was the wrong case. It was a case that, that addressed using a writ of prohibition to attempt to take jurisdiction away from a circuit court, as opposed to using a writ of prohibition to prohibit a circuit court from acting outside their jurisdiction. And it's a distinction, a subtle distinction, but a distinction that the Florida Supreme Court recognized a long time ago in 1992. Ironically, the one case that they cited was the Mendico case, and that was decided in July of 1992, and they missed or overlooked the Pelts case, which was cited, which was decided in September of 1992. So, the Florida Supreme Court took up this issue during the same session, which they frequently, courts of last resort will do that, if they've got two cases that are similar but distinguishable, so that they can draw a fine point in the law. Ironically, the cases were less than 15 pages apart in the Southern Reporter. So, I filed the motion for rehearing, and cited the Pelts case, and explained to the court where I believed that they had misapprehended or misapplied the law. And fortunately, they granted my motion for rehearing, they vacated the order dismissing our petition, and promptly issued an order directing the petitioners from Rustic Lakes, in this case, the respondents, to file their response within 20 days. So, we'll be seeing, we, that order was issued by the court last Friday, so they've got 13 days, I guess they have 13, 14 days left, so we'll see what they write. I don't know how they're going to overcome Pelts. I don't know how they're going to overcome Navalier versus the town of Manalapan, which is my case from 11 years ago. I don't know how they're going to overcome that. There are several cases out there that are very, very clear on the issue, that irrespective of what was done or how it was done, if you fail to timely invoke the jurisdiction of the court, you're foreclosed. In the interim, they have now filed a declaratory action alleging that Chapter 171 is unconstitutional on its face, is unconstitutional as applied. They're alleging that our annexation ordinance is unconstitutional on its face and unconstitutional as applied, and they also nonsensically pled a violation of the sunshine law. I have promptly filed a motion to dismiss all counts, and will set it for a hearing when I get an opportunity. I don't, whether or not it gets dismissed or not, one can, can never say. They, they would certainly get a leave to, leave to amend if it gets dismissed. I don't believe that they've stated the facts with sufficient specificity to support the claims, but we'll see. It's nothing more than, in my opinion, an, an attempt to make an end run around the 30-day jurisdictional timeline. jurisdictional timeline. There's case law out there that says, that's well-established, that says you cannot use a DEC action to do what you should have done by writ of cert, but they are making the constitutional allegations, so we'll see.
Okay. Thank you. And I went right over items for council action and discussion. Did anybody have anything else they wanted to contribute this evening? Seeing none, we are done?
The fact that we have an election on August 28th, and I urge everyone to get out and vote.
This is very true. Thank you, Mark. Have a good evening.